Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you here today to the Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, August twenty ninth of two thousand and twenty-three. It's slipping right by us, old Sam Arena. And today I had Don Schrecker, Lynn Flago, myself, Mike Steinis are your county supervisors. Alisa Smith is our.
I'm the auditor. Thank you.
I think I got the right name, Jack. Sorry, Jack. Bjorn is our IT guy, and we have security here today. Joel's here with security, and Mary is here with the newspaper, and we are ready to start the meeting. And first on our agenda is Lisa, our county auditor.
Good morning. Good morning. This morning, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the August twenty-second, twenty twenty-three board proceedings, as written by Honor Dr. Smith and authorized publication in the official newspapers.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and second to approve the minutes of the August twenty-second, twenty twenty-three board proceeding. Has written all those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Same sign? Motion carried.
And I know that this seems to be a little out of order today, but because because I would like you to, I need a motion to approve and authorize the chair initializing the solar construction contract between Jackson County and Blue Sky Solar Company for the solar array project at the Jackson County Law Enforcement Center. The reason why is because I would like you to approve the contract first, because we did include the forty thousand dollar down payment in the claims. So I wanted you to approve the contract first, which then makes the forty thousand that we put into the claims correct.
Did we get ironed out the whole last week when it was like it was stated for eighty-seven thousand, but the thirty grand or the thirty percent?
So we have to pay it to get it back.
Okay.
So that thirty percent is a federal grant that we will be getting back. And there's another potential ten percent. And I've been talking to Bruce. So just a little bit about the solar contract. County Attorney Keys did take a look at it, did give his approval. And yesterday I did visit with our insurance representative, and there's a couple of things that there it's it's a little different, but she also gave her approval. So I have reached out to those two people, and they also agree that this is a contract, a standard contract, and it's okay to sign or initialize.
I'll make that motion.
One second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the chair initialization of the solar contract, construction contract, contract as presented with Jackson County and Blue Sky Solar. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. What's in your water?
Oppose? I'm tired this morning. You're not supposed to drink your milk before you auction, you know?
So with that approval of the contract, I also need a motion to approve and authorize the auditor's office to issue warrants in the publication of the claims listing in the amount of seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-one dollars and fifteen cents.
Oh, wow.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the claims for seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-one dollars and fifteen cents. Just the note, there was two hundred and sixty in the sheriff's claims for dispatch, their share to dispatch for the year, and there was also two hundred thousand in secondary roads for bridge payment. So I mean, that takes up five hundred and fifty of it, so it looks a little better, but at least we know there's improvements being done, and we're moving forward. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, may? Motion carried.
And Don, last week you asked us to prepare a resolution for the home-based Iowa County. This is the resolution that I would like to present today, which is, I'd like a motion to approve resolution number nine eighty-eight dash zero eight dash twenty-nine dash twenty-two-three, approving support to the home-based Iowa initiative and declaring Jackson County a home-based Iowa county.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve resolution, resolution nine eighty-eight dash zero eight dash two-nine dash twenty-two-three as presented, making again Iowa home base.
Making Jackson County.
Jackson County. Home base.
Yeah.
Iowa initiative.
Iowa initiative county.
But we need to share that with any, I'm sorry.
I'll just get it. I mean, we'll just send a copy over to Brian over at the.
Okay.
Over the.
That's that's. Am I wearing off on you here a little bit?
I don't know.
All those in favor say aye please.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
And because Luann has gone today, just a quick, obviously, today we're in our board meeting. Then you do have an IFRS meeting tomorrow at eight-thirty, which is Zoom only. And there's a going away party for Nicole Mann on August thirty-first at four-thirty in Davenport for Mike. Labor Day, of course, is next Monday, and we're back here next Tuesday. So it looks like a good schedule for the week. And with that, that's all that I have.
Thank you very much. Yeah, there is, Nicole Mann is retired or moving on to a different position. And from DCAT board or DCAT, Scott County Kids. So we're gonna miss her. She's been there eight or nine years, so hopefully we get a good replacement. Move forward. Okay, are there any visitors or citizens with us today that would like to approach the board? Seeing none? I guess we will take a short recess. Morning. All right, we will reconvene at this time. We're joined by Marty Hoodlick, our Jackson County Maidsland Supervisor. Good morning, Marty.
Good morning. How's everybody doing?
Good.
We're gonna start in the county attorney's office. I didn't get the window opening opened up. The frame is not there. The window, I'm gonna say, was added even after that, because where the frame was, there's big holes in it around, so it was cut in after the wall was built. So, and you can only mud so much at a time, otherwise it all cracks up. So I've been about an hour every morning, maybe hour and a half every morning mudding it. I'm getting close to having it done.
Marty, that was the size of the hole when when you opened up the wall there?
Yes.
Because I looked at it last weekend, again, yesterday when I was here, and it just appears to me that's really low. Should it be the same height at least as the desk in case the desk is?
That's totally up to them. With talking with John and
Jess.
Jess, they really like it. They really like what what's there.
Okay.
So that's all I can say. And that's what was there when I opened it back up.
Are you gonna be around after or later this morning or an hour or something?
Yes. With this weather, we're air-conditioned. Poor. They just, every air conditioner I got is not working right.
Well, we don't need it today.
Okay. I'll let, I'll tell Karen that, okay? And, okay, so. And we went down, they wanted eight chairs, so we went down to storage room and and got eight chairs for the the, I'm gonna call it conference table in that little room that they're putting it in.
So that's not gonna be until they move their desk and move the.
We have a table.
It's in there. It's in there. The tables are in there. I'm working around it.
Isn't the conference room where the door is, where they come in the door?
No. They moved it. Is.
In that storage file room.
I think since we didn't put their, the window didn't go in, I think they changed it and put the conference room in there is what I'm thinking. Had been told that, but the table is in there, and that's where we put the chairs around the table.
And we were going to investigate a door or a different insert for the door, so if it was.
I think that kind of died by the wayside, didn't it?
No, they were supposed to get us some prices on whatever cost.
I don't think they want that anymore, though. So I didn't do it.
Well, the way I talked yesterday to them, that they still want a pass through or a lock for sure on the door.
Well, that, that, that they do, but I think, I think the pass through, I, was my understanding, they didn't want.
We don't need that, and we can get by with a lot, which is probably.
I guess that moves it over.
Security.
Do you have a quote for just doing, because the.
Not up tonight, office.
Recorder.
Recorders.
And that office versus doing everybody on the same.
Yeah, I just have the recorder's quote is all I have right now.
So I guess that would be, that would be something I would ask. Could you get a quote to do those, kind of like Becky's? Or human resources?
Yeah, but she's wanting a push button thing, though. That she can unlock the door to let somebody in.
So isn't that just like a Bluetooth? That's like a Bluetooth.
They also want the fob too.
The fob to get in, and then could she open the door from her desk or she have physically get up? Okay, so again.
It'd be kind of like what's at the sheriff's office, right? Yeah, that's what I thought she wanted.
I guess I'd say for just doing the two doors versus the whole system and then what it would cause to update, because if you're getting.
So we've talked about this fifteen times, so. How, how many more offices are in the courthouse that possibly would want something like that? Are we gonna upgrade the panel and make it available to the doors that? How many more offices is there? Just a recorder and just the attorney? Are we finished? I mean, the treasurer's office, and it's okay for the driver's license guy to come in that door and walk across, correct?
Probably should send something to department heads and find out, I guess.
Well, that's what we need to know. If we're gonna do it for one, I mean, that's the way this whole thing started. They did it to a few doors, and now you got it, I don't got it, now I want it, I should have it. Are we doing it to this door? It's a miserable door to open, but I mean, you scratch your knuckles, you're, you know, when the key is hits the door frame when they turn it.
I've heard the women's restroom, I've heard the lounge, I mean.
Well, there you go. There you go.
I wanted it for the women's restroom. Peter, did you just say that?
Yeah.
I didn't hear that. Huh?
No access for you.
And that's, that's, you know, I, I guess, you know, it's, it's something worth investigating.
Thanks for mentioning.
We're gonna upgrade our panel again. Is it a whole new wiring project or what is it? What about this office? Do they have it? No.
Can we add just another panel or do we gotta totally upgrade?
So if you wanna do all the recorders and county attorneys, then I think we can I may just have to upgrade panel back if you wanna go back there. Want to do more than that? Probably better just to do the whole system care fresh.
I, I know, is it Rep Meyer? That's the guy you're working with?
He's one of them.
Okay, so I mean, he's probably tired of us crying wolf, I suppose. You know, how many, how many bids have we gotten?
The number HR is not from Mike.
Okay, so again, you told us, I think, that the way HR is set up, it's not tied into basically our trust system.
So if you're gone, then something happens to that, you can't do anything.
So can you program that? I mean, like the one that's on Becky's door, can, yeah?
Yes, but I have to hook up a computer directly to it. To that box. Whereas the rest of the courthouse is over the network.
So, IT, I'm looking for a recommendation also to say, well, in my best.
I like my recommendation, because it's gonna cost more probably.
Yeah, well, that's what, that's what I need to know, though, to decide. I mean, is, it is security, it is capital improvement, it's both. So that's what we need to decide. You know, we have a capital improvement fund, so.
Doing one door, like Becky's office system, since it's a single office, is fine, I thought. No, I don't wanna keep adding
Right.
other offices onto that single system, I guess.
Yeah.
I'd rather it all just be the same than if.
Then you got two systems. You've got four doors on this system.
Get a quote.
Yeah. I mean, if they'll give you one again, I mean, I know.
I mean, because like I say, this store is a knucklebuster, you know, the, I mean.
So let's decide, I mean, I don't know if it's an email or stop by each office and say, hey.
Are you sure you want, if you're gonna do it, you should do it and get it done and over with, instead of this one's on, this one's off. I mean, yeah.
So you're saying not ask department heads?
If we're gonna upgrade a system, make a decision. If we're gonna upgrade a system that every door can be on it, then every door should be on it.
I'll be honest with you, with that whole thing transpired, whether I was a believer or non-believer, and this non-touch thing, and you can't touch anything, that's kind of why this ARPA money was designated in first place, is so you didn't have to touch a bunch of stuff, you know? The libraries were that way, you didn't touch, so you didn't physically open the door and turn the key and that, so you could fob it, come in without touching stuff. But does it make sense? I'm not saying it did, but, you know? But we should, we should decide, yeah.
I guess then too, like, so if you did a new upgraded system, you fob to get in here at eight o'clock in the morning, couldn't be programmed that from eight-thirty till whatever the stores open then?
Yeah, but, yeah, I don't know how often you wanna do that.
The only issue is that is, let's say, let's say Williams, even at ten o'clock, now we have a door unlocked.
Yeah, so, yeah, that's the thing. I don't think you want to leave it.
But then you've got the issue of, is it a public office? Is their office not open to the public anymore? Does she have to get up and walk around her desk for every person that comes?
You'd be able to put a button in there for her desk that she can press to unlock it if that's what you want.
So it wouldn't trigger the fob, basically, to unlock?
But see, you take the auditor's office as an example. If, if Danielle is gone, and if we were to do that, I would say I want my door open from eight till, or you know, say eight-thirty for sure until eight-thirty to four-thirty. I don't think we need to have a push button, because if Danielle's gone, she takes lunch every day, and somebody wants to get in, I don't wanna put several buttons in, which would be an added expense.
Which with your office, there's always someone there.
Which is, which is a programming issue anyway, correct? I mean, it's not like you could.
I would want the, the push button override.
You don't need that, yeah.
From eight-thirty to four-thirty.
Right. And I would say, the treasurer's the same way, but they already.
I couldn't put a push button just at Danielle's.
Driver's license would be the same, they won't be.
Well, I think the driver's license can get into the, yeah, but they can go into the treasurer's office and go into their office, right? They don't need one, right? Isn't that door always open between them?
There is no door between them.
There's a hallway between.
There's a hallway, but no.
That door's gone?
There's no door.
There never was a door.
There never was a door, just a hallway?
It was a dream you had.
I thought one time we discussed that door about closing that.
We did discuss putting a door in.
Yeah, we did do that.
See, I'm not complaining crazy, but, you know.
That's yet to be seen.
Yeah. So, I mean, really, he can get into his office no matter what. He can walk in the hallway, walk in the treasurer's office.
Yeah, but like his door's gonna have to be open to the public. You're not gonna wanna key in everybody that wants to, so this needs to be talked to, but I think we need to get to the point where we ask, you know? Do they want it, you know?
Again, it's probably not up to the officer. Probably up to office, we're gonna do it, and how many doors we're doing. And if, if it's one of them things at that door, if you're doing five of them, and that's the sixth one, and the, the cost is minimal to add it, well, it doesn't make, it makes sense to do it. I mean, I don't know why it was ever set up this way anyway. Three doors, got it, and three doors, no.
Well, back in the day, they just went around asking everybody who wanted it, and if you wanted it, you got it, and if you didn't want it.
But that office might change hands in a year.
I understand that, but that's how they did it. Because they come to me and ask if I wanted it on my door, and I said, yeah. And we like it, not because of the security, but when you got a handful of crap, you could just put your billfold up to it and get in, you know? Yeah.
Those say figure, check it out and see what we can.
I can get a price, I just, you know, how many doors, I guess.
I would do at least one door per office.
From the restroom lounge.
Yep. So does that mean, so does that mean my office has two doors? Do I get another fob or not?
I would say not, but that's, you know, I guess, if there's an argument there, I guess that.
Or maybe move it, maybe move it to the door you want.
Well, no, I'm just, I'm giving you an example. As an example, the recorder's office, then, does she get one fob or two?
One. And that's what Lynn says, one door per office.
If they, they just ask, there's the door, everybody goes in, then there's the, the one that, that goes behind their, that, that's the door they weren't fobbed.
The one that, the door that their area, they're in the area, right?
Right, yes.
The one to the east, yes. That way she can let the surveyors and people in there, is what she told me.
But if you take that, if you take that theory then, then the treasurer's office doesn't get one. The auditor's office doesn't get one.
Because the treasurer's office has one.
They already have one, so that's what I'm saying. So you already have eliminated two doors.
Right.
So then you're only talking the recorder's office gets one.
Right?
The attorney.
So you're only talking now a hand.
Maybe the engineer.
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 Yeah, and maybe.
But then again, are you looking at this?
You can't do treasurer's office license, because you said only one per office.
Yeah.
Are you looking at this as a security issue? Are you looking at this as a entrance to the office issue?
I'm looking at security and capital improvement.
If you're looking at it as a security issue and capital, well, I would fall under the capital improvement. Then, any door that goes into an office should have it. Because if we would need to go into a lockdown, how locked down are they? If, yeah, you can't get in that door, but you can get in that door.
We just got busy in the, in the security meetings for years, and Lynn has given us options for years. So what's a lockdown? You're locking in, you're locking out. And who makes the call and where's it at? Where's the button to lock it down? Where is the button to lock the whole courthouse?
Well, I don't know.
And are you locking them in or you're locking them out?
I don't know, but I'm saying.
So we've discussed it.
For two keys security.
We're doing the best we can, you know, so I think we'll get a price for how many doors we need for at least one fob per office, and then decide if that's the logical way to go.
But to me, we're not classifying it under security.
We're improving security.
Just my viewpoint.
We're improving.
Because if you still have public access to every door.
The fob isn't gonna do any good if you don't have it on every door.
Right.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean.
Well, it is for access for employees. That's, that was part of the point.
Then we're doing it for access, not for security.
And to me, I think security would be more important than access. You know?
So my other question then is, two-part question. Our back door obviously is fob now, and it's always locked, because it has a push button on the other side. So if we go into a lockdown for security purposes, so the question I have is, does my, if I get a fob, if I get a fob on the front door, the, you know, public, that'll lock down. This one's already locked down, so we're okay. Okay. So if we, if we turn that around, that says that all five doors are open from eight-thirty to four-thirty, in very way that you can override that that, my back door stays locked.
You can program my door.
Okay, so it's programmed that door.
So every, so every door that has a fob could be programmed to lock down.
Currently?
I mean remotely, or do you need to have a button? So I'm just gonna say, if, if the, if the recorder's back door is fob, is it such a thing that it's got a?
Well, that's where we need to be on, probably make it to be on the same system.
Okay, so, I'm saying, somebody wants to come in that door, so they actually either knock and they let them in? Or if they come in the other door and say, can I get in? And they let it in. And they can physically see on that door, correct? Yeah.
Oh, this, this store?
Yeah.
Amy could. I don't know about the other two.
Mm-hmm. Well, it's not like they're stuck in the chair, they can get up and look, I guess, you know?
And I'm not speaking for our league, but to me, it would make more sense to put the lock on the door that's, so they have to come in the front door and then key fob through this door, because then that way you can see who it is versus guessing who it is.
So, yeah, that's a public interest for doing business, so do they, do they physically let everybody in or is the door open? You know, like you said, you can lock the door, but.
Yeah, I don't think the reason why she didn't like that is if there's customers in there and then you get a congestion.
Walk around, okay.
Right, I mean, if they got three or four people, how often?
I understand that, yeah.
And it could get tight, like. Let's get a price for XMR doors and an option for one door of office or, we'll have to make a decision. We've been kicking.
I, and we did that idea to just talk to department heads and see what they think, what they would want. They kind of get a run count that way, because everybody has their own flow, everybody has their own ideas, you know, and just include related bathroom with the lounge. I, I guess you do.
I still think it's up to us and custodian, as far as who gets somewhere white. If you're gonna ask him at this point, and like I said, there's a new employee three or four years down the road, they say, well, I wanted, well, I'm not giving it to me. Now it costs me four times as much again.
The thing that's nice about a fob, though, is that when employees, employees come and go, if we don't get a key back, all we do is Bjorn shuts his, the fob access, the fob access.
But then you're also registered. Who's coming in, who's fob, who's coming out, which is security?
That is, that's right.
So if I register, if I go look at a home down the street and I stick my key in front of that lockbox, they know when I went in and when I come out. Well, if there's something missing, then they're looking for me.
And we have had to go back to see who went where, what time. We've had them to do that.
Then you've got a timeframe, you can go back to the cameras or a certain timeframe. Okay, I guess if you can, get some prices again. I mean, that's, that's saving us from putting a, a door in and other than, again, the chief deputy would like some type of bulletproof glass on there now. They were also talking about putting a film on that door before the next two upcoming trials, so there's two substantial trials coming up, so.
Which I believe Chief Deputy Cracker will be discussing. I did have.
Oh, is he coming today?
I had a meeting with him yesterday.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't realize. All right, move on. So.
Okay, so I got a call from Kimberly at the Senior Citizen Building. There was a gentleman out back screaming and yelling, and they thought he was stealing the wire off of the back of the building. Where back in the day, the RTA buses were plugged in, because it didn't have the shed. I was a couple blocks away, so I went down there, and by the time I got down there, he was walking down Anderson Street. And then Shannon Weber come out and said he was over here screaming and yelling, his bag, backpack was laying there, and he was down, down, so we, she called the cops, and they started coming back, so then I called the PD and said, we need somebody down here, because he's coming back, he's screaming and yelling. We didn't know what was going on. I was out in the front, I seen the patrol car pull up, I was on the phone with dispatch, and I says, tell the officers the guy in front of them. Well, come to find out, what he was doing was he wasn't stealing the wire, but the power was on there and he was charging his phone.
So Marty, just so Kimberly knows, maintenance is maintenance, and if there's an issue that's a safety issue for anyone concerned, she calls the law first, not you.
Well, I, and I, did she call you also?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so I don't know who she called first.
Okay, she needs to put priorities, i- if there's a gentleman causing chaos and could be a security issue, she needs to call the law first, not maintenance.
I, I'm not for sure she did that, but I do know that Shannon Weber did. I will let her know that. It's like when we had the gas leak, and she sent a text to me, I said, next time, call me, so I can go down and check it out right away.
And I wanna add to that.
Okay.
Briefly. If that's the call you get, and you don't know you're first, you need to call the law first before you go get into a situation that you're not prepared for.
Right, right. But what I do know.
Down there without calling the law first and having them at your side.
Because that's the same guy that's been hanging out at the fairgrounds. They've been told not to approach him at all.
Okay. Well, I didn't.
I don't know if it is the same guy, but.
So I'm just talking about a safety issue. Don't go down there and drive down there without protection or somebody with you.
Okay.
Like they, they found like drug paraphernalia in the barns.
Yeah, so, I believe that. Because the way this gentleman was acting, I'm sure that's what was going on, Jimmy.
Well, neither here nor there, I'm just saying.
Right.
Is there plugs in the back of that building that somebody can come up and just?
Well, there was. They're, they're still there, but I, there's a fuse box there, and I just cut them off, and I put a padlock on it, and I give the key to Mary.
Okay.
So that way, they'll have to cut the lock to get in there now, to have a power on. I was talking to Shannon Weber, and she said they no longer use them at all, so we could, if, if you want, take it completely off the building, because they don't use it no more.
I don't know, there's a reason to tear it off the building.
That's, I mean, as long as. That's what Lisa said too. So I put the padlock, so they can't gain interest to the breakers to turn them back on.
No, I think they wanna put the breakers on the inside of the.
You would have thought, you, you know, yeah. That's another story.
Locked now, so.
I mean, neither thing is, Marty, you can open it up and pull the breakers. You can't even turn them back on unless it goes to something else.
Well, yeah.
You can pull the breaker out.
Right, but they gave, I don't think they're gonna have a cordless sawzall or something to cut the padlock.
I'm just saying.
Yeah. You, if you want me to do that, I will do that. Let, tell me what you want, and that's what I'll do. If you want me to take the breakers out.
With it locked, I would go with that for now.
Okay. So the handrail, I am working. Uh, so the handrail, I am working on that, but last week. There's a couple days in the garage over there, like a hundred and three degrees. And I could only stand it for so long, so that I'm moving forward with it, but not at a high rate of speed. Okay. Um. When's the care facility? When we were up there, Jared. Uh, said about the moisture coming up through the floor. So he called me one day and told me to be up there at eleven o'clock, that way I could see what it's doing. So I went up there and it was just on. The north or the south hallway, the big long hallway, clear down at the end. And when we got down there, there was very little circulation, you know, it it was. There was nothing move, no, no air moving at all, so I. Asked them to make sure that the the ventilation, the circulation is working and I haven't heard back from them. Uh.
Well, I did hear also from one of the gentlemen that was looking at the floor that said, oh my god, how can they stay? It was hot.
Yeah, it was.
In the hallway, they can't, they, yeah, they just said, I said.
And I don't know. Well, there's no, there's no vent or uh, air conditioning in the hallway. There, it's in the rooms and I don't know if they could open the doors and leave the doors open, uh, because I don't know what's in the room, but. Yeah, it's hot in there. So speaking of Jared, he sent us a couple quotes on the floor. Are we gonna act on that or?
We're still waiting to get a couple more that are sent out. I don't know if there's a deadline to get them back.
Well, there was something, um. Feller, I can't ever think, Jason? Justin uh, called me and said that something was left out, so he has to rebuild bid it. And I told, told Jared that apparently the bids come open, I told him to make sure they were sealed. You know, to make it a legit thing, so they're all gonna rebid it again and make them sealed. So that way there's no is and, you know, or whatever.
Okay, and none of it was disclosed to anybody, so.
Well, it's just I got a copy of through the email, so somebody knows. What the price is before we okay it, you know.
They don't let you say so.
Well, I understand that, but I was. Way we do it here is it's, we open them in front of every God and everybody. To make it legit, and I I think that's way it should be up there too. Um.
What was the bill for seven hundred and seven dollars? What was that for that we paid in today's claims?
I did, did I okay it?
I think it was for the, for the care facility.
Yeah, it was for.
It was that other office flooring, I think, or that room flooring.
Talked about it last week or the week before. Sent an email.
So we paid, imagine the possibilities for flooring in room one. Seven hundred and sixty seven dollars.
I think that's one down there that he showed us what the flooring was gonna be for.
Not sure if that one or the other, I'm not sure.
That I don't know.
But just so. Did they need to have any okay or?
Um, you mean as far as bidding that or doing, I think that was under threshold or?
We're saying is you can do it, just send us the bill?
I would say, you know, you've mentioned that Marty, that uh, I don't know, did they? I've never known them to do that previously to just do it. I mean, even when they did the community room, I mean, we knew it, they asked us and.
I questioned Jared on that and I told him from now on that we would like bids, that way we know that we are getting. Uh, competitive prices.
I guess the question is, is did you know that they were gonna do that?
I don't think I did, I.
I did not either.
Yeah, I get it, yeah.
So that's why.
Isn't maintenance, is it? Yeah, I don't, I agree, you should know, yeah.
He told me he just didn't have time to do it and he says, if we need to set up appointment, have them all come there if they're gonna look at it. So what he did is he drew a forest land and all the measurements on, then we sent it. To like the four people that we got to bid on it.
Probably easier just call them and say, if you wanna bid it, come and look at it.
That's what I do and and make it till they're all there, all there the same day, because he is uh, run thin.
He is run thin.
Yeah, and uh. And I told him that, and I think that's why we're bidding this out, or why we're getting bids on.
Well, this is a little different. Size project too, you know, I mean, we're talking, I don't know what to come.
But even a little project, it can make a big difference.
Yeah, I mean, and we understand and we were there, we looked at it and it's it's fifty, sixty, that floor is sixty years old or seventy, whatever it is, but. Um, in the same sense, I wanna have a conversation with Todd and. See what the long projection looks like and.
Right.
See where we're at, I mean, at one time they weren't willing to guarantee us, they did a year, they give us a year for sure, and I guess that makes a difference.
Of course, we had to walk through, we went up there and did that.
Um, well, we did talk about putting maybe a walk through door or a double door in that. One room in that building, I don't know what you guys think about that, or if you had a chance to go back to unlock.
No, I didn't have.
Okay, so the room with the pilot cabinets, and I was up there again later and looked. And I believe that that support post is off to the one side far enough that you could either put. A large walk-in door or a double door per se, so we can get in it.
I think.
It's a nice room, but it's sitting in the middle of the building and there's no door to it, so you can't get to it.
Right. I think a nice four foot walk-in door would be really nice in there. Would work good. I will double check on that to uh. Uh.
And that's, that would be considered part of the farm, correct? That's one of the buildings?
Um, also, we are probably gonna have to cut down two more trees up there.
Yeah.
That are all but dead, so. Um. Hopefully we'll get that done before winter. Thanks to have a firewood. Anyway, um. I helped the security guard, we were, he's checking out the metal detectors for the. For the uh, upcoming trials, uh, it was not operating, so we kind of looked into it. I, then he found out he probably not gonna use it, right?
Not, not the second.
The second one, so. Um, but he had a loose wire on it, so I soldered that together and stuff. Um, I had conversation with the security guard on stuff they would like maybe have done. Which I think Jim's gonna talk to you guys today about it uh, for security purposes. Um, I told him to ask if we can get it, do it, we will be more than happy to help him. Um, but I wanted it all okay through you guys before I did it, okay? Um. We're the, now at the haycap building. New air conditioners down there, they're like forty some years old and we're really having problems keeping them going. I had to call the air conditioning people twice, I think they got it running the last time good. Um, the fan on the outside coil wasn't working, so I've been down there twice since they did it and then. It is going, so hopefully we got that taken care of. Um, over.
Something we should be looking into and maybe.
Upgrade.
Well, if if we're gonna, if they're that old and it's recommended, recommended to replace, then we should probably know or get an idea and is it all our baby? I don't know what the lease reads for that.
If you.
Our dime or not.
This is what would be my suggestion is on the haycap building. If you're gonna replace the air conditioners. I would recommend that we build a little ten by ten on the back of the building. Cause right now the air conditioners are up on top of the women's and men's restroom. And it is a nightmare to get in there, you're like this, trying to work on them. Uh, I think if we could build a little room out in the back and then pipe it to up there would make a lot more sense than. Cause it's, you have to crawl through a like a two foot or three foot by three foot door. And it's just really tough to work on them up in there and take care of them.
So nowadays, I mean, you're talking heat pump anyway, so. I mean, that's gonna be both, if that's the case scenario, I mean, they're much more efficient and.
Yeah.
Rebates and whatnot, I, you know, I mean, that's what we're, that's what we're looking at, so maybe we just get a general idea, so we know what we're looking at in the future here.
Okay. Um. Refrigerator at Penrose Annex. Uh, we've had it worked on several times, the front seal keeps leaking, then it drips on the floor. I would like, if possible, to replace it. Um, I talked to the gals over there, they don't need one that big, but they want one bigger than a mini refrigerator. Because it leaks on the carpet all the time, next thing you know, the the carpet's ruined, the floor's rotten. Um, do you think that'd be possible?
Um, it it's possible, is there anything over in the. Sheriff's office that's not gonna be used in the new facility?
Yeah, I would touch base with them, I can't, I would not know that.
I mean, just so we're all of a sudden, six months from now, we've got a couple of them sitting there, we're not using, yeah. They're in the same building almost.
Yeah, okay, I will, I will do that.
Um, or there's nothing down at fifty?
Don't think as far as that, no. Um, we did go down and grab a new desk for. The, is it the E M T guy?
EMS, EMS.
EMS, uh, but it, there was no. It was just a desk and. Shelley found one, I believe in your story somewhere, correct me if I'm wrong, and we grabbed that one. And it has the the L to it, a little bit bigger desk, so we set that up for for him, got him a chair and a chairman. Uh, told him if he needed anything else, just let us know, but he seemed satisfied. Um, out in front of the sheriff's office, I don't know if you ever noticed it, but there's water coming up through the street all the time. And we, I think it's from, coming from the sheriff's office. So I contacted them, they said they would come and look at it, but it wouldn't be right away because they got a big project going on down at the.
Coke and water?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they said they would come and look at it, um, but it wouldn't be right away, because. We even with no rain all summer long like we've had, there's water still coming up out of the ground.
Do we not have a fiber board go through one of the, was it a water line, a sewer line or something?
It was the sewer line on the courthouse.
It's on this side of the street.
Yeah, yeah, of course, me, Tom paid for that, right?
Right.
That didn't sound very convincing.
Well, first of all, we we couldn't get a hold of them to to quiz them on, there's no number to get a hold of them. So, but anyway, okay. Um, I have been mowing lawn, it doesn't look like it, but it, you mow it one day and the water grass is this tall the next day.
That's one thing that's grown is.
Yeah, so it looks terrible, but I I'm doing the best I can with it. So the next thing is, um, myself. Uh, sheets, construction and the gentleman that's making the cabinet over here had a meeting, uh. To to line up when we're doing that, so I can come in and take it out. Uh, me and my department are gonna take it out and then Sheets is gonna come put it in. And then we're gonna run the wire back underneath, electrical wire back underneath to the plugins. So we set up a date. And it skips my mind what it is, but there's a holiday and we're gonna do it the Friday before the holiday. I don't know which one that is.
That's this Friday.
Huh?
That's this Friday.
No. No, I'm thinking. What is, is there?
Labor Day. Thanksgiving would be now, I mean, Labor.
I think it's Veterans Day. I think that's when we're gonna do it. Is that on a Monday? Is it on Monday, you know? Veterans Day would be a Saturday. This year, yeah, and I think we get the Monday off, so we're gonna take it out Friday. We're actually gonna start taking the drawers out of it during the week and then Saturday. Um, we're gonna take the rest of it out and. Um, we're gonna just junk it because it's no good for anything. But we do have somebody that may would, maybe would like to have it and do you have a problem with me giving it to them?
Are you talking secondary roads or something?
No. No, it's an individual in the building. But that's. Uh, the the whole thing, they want the whole thing, put in a shed or something, I'm thinking.
They wanna take it out, they can have.
But he'd be, he'd be willing to help I bet. Wouldn't you?
Is that a violation right there?
I don't know, um. Again, we're cleaning the, the little window air conditioners over in the sheriff's office, because with this humidity and stuff, they're just. Basically black with mold or something in the inside, so I'm taking all them out, cleaning them out, um, I'm on my last one. What I was doing before I stepped here, I wasn't over there grading anything, I was working on the air conditioner. And I took the, the rager had the brake fixed, cause when you pushed on the pedal. It like that and some sensor on the wheel was bad and he said two of them were bad and so we replaced all four. And that's about it.
Thank you.
Okay, any questions for Marty? All right, guys, have a good week.
All right, thank you.
Uh, would you send Nathan in? I see him in the hall.
All right.
Good morning, so we're joined by Nathan Jones, our Jackson County Conservation Director?
Yep. How are you guys today?
Good, good morning.
Um, I guess we'll start with updates on our last board meeting, we had a board meeting pushed back this month, like one weekly or normal. Um, we were down a board member, but what we started with this month is, uh. We had some discussions on getting ready for budget season coming up, but first off. Lisa had asked me um, to discuss with um, our board about swimming in our areas. Considering uh, the Selsor Pond property was brought into question from the insurance. Um, what I kinda got was. They wanted me to come back and talk to you guys a little bit before they made a motion on it, um. They're concerned if we eliminate swimming and subtract from some of the programs we're already doing that allow swimming in some of our areas. Um, they, they were wondering what the cost to the county is, but they also brought it up that they don't want us to post. That we're allowing swimming down these areas. Is kinda where the board went, so it was a little bit in three directions. They think we should probably still allow it on an area, but they didn't make a motion. But they also don't wanna promote it on any area, so that was a question maybe for you guys and the insurance is. Is that even possible to say we were just kinda. Somebody swimming, we're not gonna say anything to them, but we're also not putting signs out saying swimming areas or something.
I guess I can't speak for the insurance company, they're gonna have to tell us what's our liability, if this or that, or what kinda signs are posted. I would say somehow or some way, it's gotta be at least an adult present or somebody present, if you're, if you're underage or whatever it may be. I don't know how you word that, but that's. Um, and I mean, if you're gonna have an event and you've got five or six adults there coordinating.
Yeah.
With.
If it's safety where they're doing boat safety or boat rescue or.
Some.
Which is an educational program.
Curse spell, I don't, they do yoga and paddle boards or something every once in a while.
Yep, that's, that was their concern is if we shut it down, are we eliminating some of these things that we're already doing for programming? On our areas. But on on, and I think you guys probably would agree, we don't need the, the beach situation that most county parks have across state that. Are usually law enforcement issues and problems promoting. Um, we just don't have the ponds that are set up for those situations, the, our water quality probably isn't there. And any of our water bodies, I'm, I mean, they haven't done water tests, but I. I'm assuming that not the cleanest systems in the world.
Well, again, most of our ponds are fed through the system and.
Yeah.
I guess. Completely different than kayaking and paddle boarding and things like that.
But what we talked about, when I talked to Nate about this after it got brought up too, is I said. For example, I'm out there in the middle of that lake and I tip, I can't get back in the kayak in the middle of the lake. Is that classified as swimming then? If I'm pushing and swimming, might kayak to shore? Or is that not classified as, are we talking just open swimming, taking the family to the pond to go swimming?
Open swimming, I mean, if you tip your kayak, you're not swimming, you're struggling to get back to shore, there's a difference.
Right.
If the primary intent of the activity was to spend all day in water, that's swimming. If the primary intent was to be in your kayak and you just fell out, that's different.
Yeah, I think what comes of this is the board kinda wanted. Reach out to the insurance and see how. Where our liability falls as a county and.
Well, if our liability goes up, we'd be happy to pass the expense along to board.
Yeah, well, that's not, but maybe the case is, that's still gonna be our baby, that's still gonna be our dime if we pass it on to the board, that's our dime, so. I mean, the thing is, again, I'm not gonna answer for the insurance company, but I certainly want an answer from them and says. Well, yeah, if I have adult supervision there for an activity. Of, you can't stop people from going in there, of course, I mean, you can't parole it twenty-four seven, so, I mean, that's, that's, I mean. Then what, do we have to put up a chain like fence, well, I mean, well, you know.
Yeah, of using the pond. That is no open swimming.
Yeah, it could be that simple.
Do you allow duck hunting on all of our, on all of our ponds?
No, well, perfect, all of our ponds are. Technically, I guess if you wanted to home with a poet, Prairie Creek, but that's only one. Oh, Pepkey, they could duck hunt.
Do you allow that?
There, here's an issue, we, yeah, we would. I guess waiting in the water. Um, Southfield campground, that's common for people to be swimming off that, outside their campers on that.
That water's gotta be pretty funky right now.
Oh, it would be, but.
Yeah, I, I can't answer that, I mean, it's all good questions, so that's, that's why we need to bring it up and say, I mean, how much can you have or how much can you do without a?
Yeah, I guess more. I think that was why our board didn't wanna make a motion on it, they wanted to get a little more information from the insurance before.
To me, I think there's a big difference in, I mean, farm ponds and, you know, you're not gonna let them swim over Prairie Creek, I mean.
I wouldn't want it.
Yeah, with the runoff coming from the, the brushside and stuff, they can't even keep fish alive or nothing, I mean, so. I mean, there were some, there's a safety, maybe we just test the water and we say, this is not. Say, you know, you know what, you look what they do at Lake McBride, you show up to the, the Ecolight test, no. They don't want people swimming because of the, the Ecolight levels, I mean, it could be something like that, I mean, rivers would be a lot better than. Farm ponds, but I mean, where I grew up, nobody ever swam in a farm pond, but.
Yeah, yeah, so. Guess I didn't answer what Lisa wanted coming out of that and hopefully we can move it into the next month.
Would you prefer that we just had the insurance agents, um, come and present and you can ask all the questions, do you want?
Well, yeah, I would say we need to have our options laying on the table to say this or what.
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, are we liable, we're not, we don't have a fence around it, for goodness, so we, I mean, are we liable to somebody?
Yeah, cause are we a blanket coverage, shouldn't we be covered no matter what? I mean, are they just trying to?
Farm pond that you see. Farm reliable?
I mean, or does that?
We already post no swimming signs in the harbor at Spruce, cause the court makes us there, that's something. I mean, we wouldn't want people swimming anyway.
And it could be that simple.
Yeah, I don't know what it comes to.
Well, let's find out.
So, and I guess from there, the board meeting went to the, um, our. We kinda, I, I sent them, set it in front of them up, just like a project list. If some of you have seen it, um, in the past, it's similar from years past, just to start making them think about what they wanna ask for. In the coming budget, what should be priorities, what are things we need to think about? Um, and I will send that to you guys so you can look at, some of it's probably stuff that'll never happen. And some of it might be things that we need to really figure out how we wrap our heads around it, um. And I, I know several of you have been on a while, their number one thing was how we get the shop, a new shop placed. Get us off the corner at Spruce where we're loading trailers in the road and don't have enough room for our equipment and everything else. Um, so. What came out of that meeting is they want me to try to figure out size for building. To give you guys something to work off of what it would cost. They're hoping you guys maybe have a little more information on what it costs us per square feet for that building at the jail, just for similarity. So we can kinda get a little closer on idea what the budget's gonna be going forward as we, if we can ever produce this new shop. Um, and what, what it's gonna take to, and location, um.
Have you talked about location or is Prairie Creek feasible, I mean, one time you talked about county farms, so.
We have done some mapping and the county farm is the most centralized location in the county to reach. To make it so we probably would have the less mile, or less mileage driven in a vehicle to get to the things.
But then you gotta go somewhere every day from there. You're not at Prairie Creek.
So. Spruce Creek is already the one that probably takes most time, just with the harbor and docks and campground. Does it, would it take that much more time if we moved away? I think it probably would, we're still gonna have to do all the things we're doing there if we wanna keep it as a nice of a campground as it is. Um, Sebel Lake takes quite a bit of time. So, there is that issue, what, what is your, as we develop Prairie Creek, what is the best answer? Um, for trade and building location. And that's why they, they still think maybe this county farm is the best location, cause at least it's centralized and you don't have as much drive time to everything. Um, instead of going forty minutes one way every time, you're only going fifteen minutes or in each direction.
And we get to take a look how feasible and where and what, you know, I mean, figure out the layout.
Yep, that, so they wanna get serious with that now, they wanna have, get some serious conversations with you guys and how we get this process moving.
Well, we're gonna need to know what kind of spurts, what is your thinking that you need, no, that kind of stuff.
So.
I mean, we have a number on this one, I'm sure we can come up with a number on that one.
Yep, so I think that would be horrible to figure out, um, and then we kinda went down some of the list of priority, major projects like. Uh, where, where we go, can we wait figures on this or not, um. Next month, they'll probably come back to me with what, what their thoughts are, we really only seriously talked about the shop. There was other things in the list, they're gonna take it back and look at it, think about, how do we, how do we prioritize to get the, these things repaired? I mean, we all know what infrastructure is the main cost to the county and how do we, what the future infrastructure cost? How do we maintain what we have enough and how do we develop in the future, this kinda what I brought forth in front of them. We'll see where we kinda come from that next month, um, as we, it is a, an extensive list of projects, um. It's over, added up to over thirty million dollars, but things if we're ever to do them all. So, it's a.
It's nice to look at the big picture, I mean, it's no different than a comprehensive plan that we're doing, I mean. So again, if you're looking at a size or something, I don't know if you've been in the Sterling building, but that's a very nice building.
I have not.
That is, you should visit that because that, that's not very old, that's, well, you one or two years old. Um, again, very nice building, I don't know if it's size enough, but they would have numbers on that too.
Yep, so those are things that kinda came from that meeting was those discussions. Um.
So when you, when you're looking for like a new shop, would you keep some stuff at the Spruce Creek place or like one person there? Well, cause you're doing mowing, all that stuff, or would you completely leave that spot because?
Well, I think for the county's best interest and future costs, it probably make more sense to get rid of the leads off the core. Ground where we have.
Is that core ground up on top of there?
Yep, it's core ground, that whole road is core ground going down to the rear end. Um. We have certain standards we're supposed to meet and eventually they're gonna start to force them on that at some point.
Um, so at one time, the tanks were talking about moving too, you know?
Yep.
And that would be a decent spot probably, but.
Yeah, you need to place on a little paved road or something, yeah, um, there's. That was things the board discussed, well, could we find somewhere with them so close to here, well. Here to have land costs then too, instead of, well.
We're looking for space, were you gonna move your whole operation? Leave some there knowing that, um, there's probably almost full time work for one person at Spruce Creek?
Yeah, but you know how it is, once you get, you get, a lot of jobs take two people to do, meet safety standards and. Yeah, we have four staff members to split us shop and then things don't communicate and get done well. Seen that done across the state, it works some counties, it doesn't work in others.
Flexibility has to be key.
Yeah, um. I, I ultimately picture eventually the sheds at Spruce would probably come down, cause they're already.
Well, they have much shed there.
Yeah, they're already rotten.
That's okay, so, I would say get, yeah, get, do some more studying here and get some more.
So, that's kinda where they discussed some of that. The next thing that was kinda brought up at that meeting, we're having such. Staff shuffling, and I mentioned this in the month before, but we even had another movement here. We make, we're having an initial that probably is leaving us in December. So, going forward, we're gonna be bringing some stuff forward to you guys on how to move our staff around, uh, fill in niches and make, get the jobs done we can. Uh, for the county, uh, to hopefully you'll support. Us taking care of our areas will be priority and maintenance of what we have and then, um. Continuing our education, is that we have that kind of a three-pronged thing, we have the, you know, the education. We have the recreational aspect and then the natural resource aspect and how we take care of all those. So, the board kinda had a discussion, how do we, how do we keep this going in a healthy direction, um, and hopefully you guys kinda have a. Some support in that direction, how we can move some numbers around and get this done.
I guess again, we'd like to see a plan or.
Yep, so.
Proposal anyway.
We'll have a proposal for you and I'll probably just email some of this stuff out to you and if you have questions to me, um, that way you can. Reach out to me on all this stuff and it might work into the long, the county's. Comprehensive plan to have some of this information.
Um, and again, good stuff to have for information, we have their meetings, I mean, you know, but.
Yep, and how we can work together and work with other agencies, I saw the sheriff come in and I threw him under the bus, we, we housed two. Side by sides that we keep paying a bunch of money to maintain. I think they were technically donated to the sheriff's department from Scott County, I'm hoping he'll work with us. And maybe we replace them with one, trade them both in, but hopefully he knows how they came, cause I can't figure it out in any file. So, um, but that was something that was brought up, how do we work with others to get things done too?
Where are they at?
Their departments, the side by side, they're sitting in our shop, they're at Spruce.
They are, both of them?
Yep.
They both run?
Yeah, like, they run and die, run and die, I mean, we do, we use them, so.
Yeah.
Uh. They don't shed, right? And we, yeah, and we keep, uh, putting money as a bearings and is it worth putting money into something then? When we can have a nice machine, both, both.
We got them donated, they weren't a lot of value in them, so.
Um, no, and I haven't talked to the sheriff.
I don't think there's a lot of discussion.
I, that was something our board, how do we work with other agencies, our departments to get stuff done too, to help us out.
Some of that stuff, yeah, it makes sense to share because you don't use it day in and day out.
Yeah, so, they need it for a safety thing at the fair, they work in a parade or something. We'd have a nice enough machine that's trustworthy enough for them and we need it for something too. Those are kinda things the board discussed too, how do we, how do we go forward with other departments to make the best of it? So, uh, when was your meeting? Last Tuesday.
Last Tuesday, so I haven't, not seen any minutes.
No, no, not yet, and I gotta do them, cause she a little sick, so I'm behind.
So we can put that one on the other one where it was.
They talked about it, they kinda wanna wait to November, just. Cause they think the hassle, trying to get all those boats out that are in there is not, uh, worth the black eye that we're gonna sustain from. That we've allowed them in there now, um, they don't see the river going back up and it kinda, it probably doesn't look like it's gonna. Three feet now, but.
Is there a timeframe that we have to extend for that?
No, he, well, the way we wrote it back, I wrote him back, he has this, these winter months coming forward now to replace the months that he.
Well, I haven't heard any complaints about it the way it is, so when they're using it, it's functional, I guess. Like I say, I don't see the river going back up to twenty feet anytime soon, but. Three point one six this morning or something, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's supposed to go under three, I don't know if I've ever seen that, so.
My only fear is whether, when it comes hard and fast and you can't get in there because.
Yeah.
It's crappy or.
Yeah.
Can we just block the harbor off right at the river and then it's all dry?
Suck it out, yeah.
Suck it out.
Yeah, I don't know. So, and then we just kinda gave a parks update and some of the things the staff's been doing, but, um, there's some things. Um, going on complaints and stuff, I'm actually probably not supposed to say to you guys right now yet, you'll hear about them coming up, so. Some of that'll be.
Well, if it's confidential, it's confidential.
So, um, that's probably about what we had for last meeting, if there's any questions you guys have, um.
Minutes and the reports that you're going forward and proposals and whatnot, so.
Yep, so I'll send some of that stuff off to you, when I get it all done and put together. Um, I think we'll skip destination item meeting this month, talking to the city manager, just not worth your guys' time again.
Thought I seen some updates on that on an email that maybe it was progressing some.
We did get a little progression finally on the planning from the A and R, but it's still slow.
Good.
So, but we'll go from there.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Thanks, guys.
Appreciate the update, Nathan. Stay warm next week. Stay cold. Did I see one or seven or something?
Most of, most of the week, looking at a pretty smooth night.
Oh, yeah, well, it's kinda like, just, you know. Hit through the holiday weekend.
Thanks.
Yeah, thanks, guys. All right, next on my agenda, I have James Crocker. Steve Duffy, it looks like you're working on your day off, Dine.
Little bit.
You have your resolution?
The resolution, I think I have. Okay, um, I'm just gonna hit some key points with this. Um, the first, uh, key point is. This resolution in effect swallows a twenty eighteen resolution. Um, that pretty much puts forth, we contract to three events, so that's. Um, not in actuality anymore, so that resolution should go away and, um. When, when you consider this, we'll present that one as well. Uh, the, the, the notes and bullets of this are, uh, when in a contract situation, our officers are outside there. Their, uh, their set work hours and they're making time and a half. Currently, the average pay is seventy-one oh five throughout the department per time and a half. When you take into account, uh, IFRS and FICA, assorted, um, insurance costs that way. Becky crunched those numbers, so our current rate of pay is sixty-five per contract. Is what we, we charge other municipalities and organizations, so that's not currently covering. And if you remember in twenty-one, we went to sixty-five without a resolution, we just enacted that. Uh, the original resolution is forty-five dollars an hour, so what, it's quite outdated. Um, so going to seventy-five does cover the costs now. Because we don't have the, the manpower to cover contract for, uh, events like the fair. We, we offer that out throughout law enforcement in the county, so Macocota and Bellevue and Conservation help with that. And Preston and Sebel, um, currently we're paying them forty-five an hour. When they do that, this would bump that up to fifty dollars an hour to, to, to further match what their time and a half would be. So, uh, the other addition to this is we added on. That it would, it is our right to add ten percent administrative fees to this when it fits. Uh, by example, miles that currently fits. Now, uh, in bringing miles into this, we do have a contract with them at sixty-five that'll be reviewed next. Next June, so then that, that would bring them into line as well, but currently they're at sixty-five plus that ten percent administrative surcharge. So, that's, uh, any questions on that? Okay.
No, obviously, it's, it's probably dated and needs to be reviewed and.
Yeah. You know, th- this is foundational for what we talked about a few meetings back, going forward with the other municipalities and. Uh, getting into, into legal line with contracting with Andrew Lamont. Baldwin Monmet, um, we wanna, we, that's going to be a formula and we want the right numbers in place for that formula. Okay, so if there's some questions on that, um, I'm gonna. Okay, so if there's some questions on that, um, I'm gonna filibuster here a little bit and add something. Now, this is a letter in and with. With a major jury trial coming up. Um. It it's important for the sheriff and the the county attorney and the county auditor to really start to manage the courthouse during that event. Um, everything we're doing is gonna be in line with. Uh, a twenty-eleven resolution for courthouse security, the safety and security policy. So, uh, in light of that, we just want um your endorsement with that as well. This is a letter that would go out to all employee courthouse employees, just informational. It's it's part of a whole series of uh taking control of of the location and making for a safe, secure jury trial. That's gonna involve a lot of people. So, does that uh, does that have your blessing to go out this week?
Yes, I'm glad. Do we, do we need to?
These are both action items on there.
So actually, I need a motion to approve rescinding resolution number six fifty-two dash zero six dash twenty-six dash twenty-eighteen. And approve revolution number nine eighty-nine dash zero eight dash twenty-nine dash twenty twenty-three for contracted law enforcement services.
I'll second that.
I have motion to rescind the old service contract and to approve the new resolution. Um, as presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carry.
And then I believe what he handed you in front of you, I do not believe needs to have a motion. It's up to you, but I don't believe it.
Doing this, are we making everybody then come in through the door?
Yeah, um, part of the. Part of that twenty-eleven safety resolution is based on uh this the state's best practices. And that's one entry point uh during during that trial.
I would be in favor of that one.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Yeah.
And I have one other question because when Marty was in here, um, I believe you've asked Marty to do some certain things.
Oh, absolutely. I'm sorry. Okay, within that and um, we we will have an operations plan for this for approval. But there would be some modifications to the premise um to. To meet the judges' needs uh and the jury's needs. And that would be placing uh a a covering over the windows in the jury room. The far, the far door where we'll be entering um with the defendant. And the the entrance door right outside the attorney's office, we would be covering those. We can't have. Uh, we we can't have a defendant in view of the jury in custody in a jury trial. So we have to just make sure we're, we're doing some line of sight blockings. Everything temporary is pretty much poster board on on glass windows.
So they can't see out orient? I thought we talked about a film on that attorney door at one time, but.
Yeah, uh, th- this wouldn't be, th- this is just uh really uh meet the needs of this trial. There's, there's no security aspect of it. It it's a court requirement.
Okay.
So, but that is a modification for your building.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I mean, yeah, we're required to do it. Very much we can do.
Okay, yeah. And I I don't think anything else, um, obviously, we can't uh lock doors for your, you know, for your codes, uh violations, things like that. So we'll have a lot of signage, but that'll be in the operations plan. You see, you're gonna see um Lisa's providing a lot of the. Uh, the placard boards that we're gonna modify for information. Uh, just to help, the the first two days are gonna have a lot of people here. And we just have to make sure we're, it it's gonna be. We need to be efficient for the court to be efficient in moving people.
Do what we gotta do.
Right.
Yeah. Good day to go fishing.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you.
Jim, good day to go fishing.
I already went this morning.
I like fish. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, we'll take a short recess at this time. We will reconvene at this time and uh there's uh appears to be nothing further on our agenda for today. Are there any commission or reports to uh report on? I mean, we all were out at uh Des Moines last week. Um, I guess a lot of networking, I should say, if that's the right word. Um. It was interesting. I I didn't get to spend the full amount of time. I had a personal issue that I take care of, so. But uh, I think it's all in all, it was good. Um, I would have liked to have seen, I sat in on. One of the engineers. Programs a little bit one time and I'd like to have seen uh Jake going out there, so we talked about, talked about it with them. Our engineers, so it's like. Yeah, probably probably try to give it some thought.
Yeah, they put on good seminars and stuff and for the most part they do, but the the most benefiting going on there is talking to the other supervisors and other elected officials. Their challenges, their struggles, how they handle them and they pick our brain as much as we pick theirs, so it's good to just gotta. Get a feel for what's.
Yeah, to interact and how you, how you come to conclusions and what's happening, yeah, so it's uh, it's always good. Interesting and learning experience, so. Um, yeah, others, I don't know if I have any. Any other reports that I need to do? I have a motion to second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, nay. Motion carry, major adjourn, thank you.